All right, can I be heard? All right, we're going to be starting the intro in a bit and I'll let you guys know when we do our countdown. All right, we got about 30 seconds. All right, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four. We're on.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Thank you all for being here. We have a nice crowd. Welcome, everybody, to the Cedric County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, May 24th. Madam Clerk.
Invitation to be led by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Nicole, good morning and welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. As I shared last week, May is a busy month and honoring county employees. This week will not be any different. This week specifically, May 21st through 27th is EMS Week and it is also Public Works Week. I have a video for each and we'll start with EMS.
My favorite part of the job is helping people in their greatest need and be able to provide them with care that actually makes a difference and get them to hospital in a timely manner.
Honestly, I wasn't really planning on getting EMS. I got my EMT because I was going to use it to work through college and I absolutely fell in love with it, so decided to do it full-time.
So our normal day, I show up to work, clock in, will first go out and check the truck, make sure we have the appropriate stocking levels of medications, supplies, make sure the team going off left enough fuel for us to run our calls.
The bulk of our job is spent out in the streets responding to calls, just helping people where they need it.
I'm at one of my visitor stations, so we're looking at eight to 10 calls a day.
So we have to start out with our EMT and then we take prereqs before you can apply for the paramedic program. The length is different depending on which program that you go to. The one that I went to was about a year and a half and it's pretty intense, a year and a half of learning in clinicals and then you have your field internship, so so much more goes on in the back of the truck than just a ride to the hospital.
Ambulance gets us there, gets to the hospital, but the knowledge that the paramedics bring and the EMTs bring and also the equipment we have in the back to assess, treat, give impressions on what's going on and get them to higher level of care.
All our providers have a passion for helping people, so when you call, you're going to get the best care that we can provide.
Very nice.
Yes, we have a large crowd of EMS folk here today. They are here for the proclamation that'll be read later today, but just wanted to give a special shout-out. We appreciate all you guys do for the community. Thank you. Like I said earlier, it is also Public Works Week and we have a short video for that.
Environmental covers a wide range of topics. We work with high groundwater problems and flooding in basements. We also work on solid waste issues and we also work with special waste and those special wastes include the tire event we just had. We have an electronic waste event planned for next year, 22 Christmas tree drop-off sites where the trees are mulched and the mulch is available for the citizens. And we have this household hazardous waste facility that receives chemicals from the home, whether that's used oil, paints, solvents, any cleaners that you might have under the sink that are no longer used. If products are still good shape and the labels are readable, we put them out in the swapper shop and people can pick those up for free. Tires we collect at our event, they try to reuse what they can, retread what they can. You can make crumb rubber and crumb rubber can go into playgrounds, making park benches, bird baths, many different things. On the electronic waste, our contractor, everything they collect is either reused or recycled and none of it goes overseas.
The legislature back in the 1930s decided that bindweed, field bindweed, was becoming such an issue in the state that they needed to protect farmers and property owners from invasive species that might be coming in and so they created the Noxious Weed Law. All that land that could be productive land for farmers, it really hurts the economics of farming and ranching. Farmers are busy. They're busy people and they're busy with their crops, they're busy with their livestock and they don't have time necessarily to deal with a few weeds on their land, so we will go out and help treat the few noxious weeds that we see on their properties, so.
While we don't have anyone here from Public Works, they are actually in the upper part of the state receiving their award for their project of the year, so that's why they're not here today. May is also Older Americans Month. The 2023 three theme is Aging Unbound, which offers an opportunity to explore diverse aging experiences and promote flexible thinking about aging and how we all benefit when older Americans remain engaged, independent, and included. We also created a video for this, too.
I am 62 years old and very proud of that. I work for the county commissioners and I've been with Cedric County for 43 years.
I will be 68 in June. I've been in their office for 22 years, going on 23.
Eighty-six at this point. And if I donate in November, that'll be eighty-seven. Been in this building about fifty-one years now.
We may not move as fast, we may not think as fast, but I think our thought process is a little more put together.
Well, I just enjoy my work. I enjoy visiting with people and being able to help the system work.
I like my job. I really love my coworker and we've had such different personalities through the years. I think to date I've worked for 24, 25 commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioner.
I'm your knight in shining armor.
That you are. We love you, too.
Happy Monday.
Happy Monday to you.
Doesn't matter who walks through our door. The thing is that you greet them professionally and you be kind and you treat everyone the same.
It doesn't matter if they're a homeless person coming in or a dignitary. We treat them all the same.
Don't let money rule you. Not about the money, it's about being able to contribute and make a system flow smooth.
Cedric County is a great place and I know that as older Americans, we still have a lot to offer.
But don't ever think that you don't have something to offer because we all do.
Cedric County is blessed to have a large group of older Americans that work for us and we are thankful for all the knowledge they have of our county and the work they do here. And last but not least, May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. This Mental Health Awareness Month, challenge yourself to examine your world and how it can affect your overall health. Look around, look within. From your neighborhood to genetics, many factors come into play when it comes to your mental health. Executive Director Joan Tammany is here and she also brought with her a short video to play. And with that, I'd like to invite Joan to the podium. We also have Jen Wilson here as also part of Comcare.
I'm hoping next year that's easier. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Joan Tammany, Executive Director, and Jen Wilson, Director of Crisis Services, here with me today. Thank you for giving us a few moments on the agenda to talk about an important topic, Mental Health Awareness Month. We know that mental health is a brain disease and these disorders are common and they deserve as much attention as any other physical health concern when it comes to financing, care, access. The reality is that without mental health, there's really no physical health. So many of our friends, families, neighbors struggle with anxiety, depression, and other mental health conditions. Often, they suffer in silence as the average lapse time from onset of a mental health illness and treatment averages 14 years and we know that that's just not okay. So we're working to explore additional early onset options so that we can increase access earlier in a person's experience with mental health so that they can have improved outcomes and more quality of life earlier. During the month of mental health awareness, I want to make sure that we shout out a huge thanks to the Comcare workforce. They come to work every day and they do it for more than just the job. These are people that are passionate about caring for others. We have others in the community, the audience today, who also do similar work. We do people work and it takes a special, special heart and soul to do that long-term. I'm proud of the services that we offer at Comcare and look forward to the next couple of years as we grow our services to further meet need. I want to make sure that we continue to grow our workforce and create environments that ensure the safety and emotional well-being of not only our workforce, but anybody that comes through our doors. I know that, I can wholeheartedly say that the people that work for Comcare are one of your greatest assets here at Cedric County and I really think, just like some of our EMS and Public Works people we're honoring today, these are the unsung heroes in our communities. I may be the face of Comcare, but Comcare is the people that do the behind-the-scenes work, do the direct service work, and really care about our community. We know that as a society, the demand for mental health services has progressively over the last five to 10 years started to outpace capacity. This is an industry that people are not going into as often as they were before and we need to create pathways to assure that we continue to have a pipeline of people that want to do not only mental health services, but public mental health services where we're working with the people that don't have access to all the service providers that you can go through their doors with an insurance card or with a cash payment and get access pretty immediately. These are people who have often delayed accessing care because finances are a concern and so consequently, when they come to us, they're in a greater need, a higher need, and often in crisis. And I would like that to change in our community over the next few years. I do want to also make sure that during Mental Health Awareness Month, we remind people that if you have a loved one or you are the individual who's struggling with thoughts about why it's worth living another day, it is. We do know that thoughts about suicide tend to be temporary and if you have a warm and caring ear on the other side, often we can get through that and try to work out a plan for a more robust life following that. And with that, I'm really proud to say that Comcare is one of the national lifelines. We answer the 988 calls locally that come to 316 area code. I think Cedric County and Comcare have a lot to be proud of. As a state, we're reaching 91% of those calls directly in Kansas and Comcare has hit 90% since we launched in July 2022. So people who are calling 988 locally are getting a local response where they know the resources and can help. Jen Wilson, I think it's really important to do a shout-out here for her because she was on the statewide implementation team and was the champion for creating the environment where we were able to add that responsibility to our call center activities at Crisis and we're really lucky to have her. You saw the video, that was our children's mental health awareness fun day at OJ Watson Park on May 7th. Jen Wilson took the time to put that together and I really appreciate it because it's really hard to tell a picture about mental health. What is mental health? And I think those images and the music kind of captured the essence and the heart of what we do, so I really appreciate her effort on that. And just again, just a reminder that if you or someone you love or care about or even somebody in your community that you're concerned about and you need some help, don't hesitate to call 988. I do want to share that we are engaged in lots of new initiatives. This is a one-time to educate the community about public mental health services, but we're getting ready to launch an early psychosis program, so young adults or late-age teens who are starting to experience their first psychotic episode, which is really frightening and overwhelming for family, loved ones, foster care families, whoever it is that's caring for that individual, will have a resource down the road once we skill up our workforce to treat that population under new evidence-based practices. But we're also, I see Alora in the audience, and we're, we're working closely to embed mental health professionals, hopefully more than one, into 911. We're working closely and we'll have a contract coming up with Wichita Police Department to add four more teams of co-responders onto the streets. All of these activities are designed to meet the person in need where they need it and how they need it. And with the co-responder activities, it's really important that we recognize that every person that calls in a mental health crisis to 911 does not need an armed response. So our goal is to get different responses out to the community. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity to promote Mental Health Awareness Week, Month, and thank you for the time.
Okay. Thank you, Joan. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Joan, Jen, thank you for being here today. Thank you for your advocacy with Mental Health Month, but also thanks for all that you do at Comcare. I think we've said this on multiple occasions, that this community isn't fully aware of all that you guys do here.
Right.
And I know that the last few years have been challenging because of workforce issues, but I want you to know that we're proud of you. We're proud of the things you're doing. We're hopeful with all the things that are coming in this community, from the regional mental health hospital to Comcare expansion, to a possible biomed campus, to possibly even a social services hub that could be coming, mental health court, all these things that we're talking about. Comcare is going to be in the middle of all of these things.
Yeah.
And working interchangeably with all these different elements. So I was with May's UST 266 last week and they were raving about your M-HIT teams, the mental health intervention teams that are in our schools. Again, another thing that most of our community doesn't know that Comcare does, but those that are involved in the space certainly know and feel your impact, so they were raving about you guys.
Thank you. I mean, the one thing, other than our workforce, the thing that we do really, really, really well is we partner well. We have, we have to learn everybody's system and move into those and work through them and the schools is one of those. We have, we're in multiple districts.
You are, yeah. Well, just officially, thank you.
Thank you.
For all that you guys do at Comcare.
Great comments. Commissioner? Any other comments?
I did want to take this opportunity. Last June, we had the blessing to have Governor Kelly and her staff come down and sign the 988 bill here at Cedric County and I wanted to shout-out to Commissioner Howe. He took time out of his busy, busy schedule to personally frame and acquire all the materials. He also worked to get the signatures on here and this, this copy will be going to Comcare. We also have one here in our Admin Services and we just wanted to thank him for his, for his work. Of course.
Yeah, we really appreciate that.
Let me just say one thing here. So I think, I just wanted to echo the comments of Commissioner Beatty, but you know, this legislation did not happen without a champion behind it and Joan Tammany and her staff really pushed this legislation forward as a priority of our state and it, I'm very proud of that and proud of them for doing that. They are saving lives. This legislation is about the 988 hotline and I know that they're saving lives and so I want to say, this is a small appreciation for what they've done and I want to recognize that they are fabulous in pushing forward common sense and wonderful legislation to saving lives and they deserve our applause and our appreciation. Thank you, Joan, for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And thank you also, I know Alora Forshee, our Director of 911, is in the audience and thank you endlessly for all the work that you and your staff do with the 911.
With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Being none, thank you. It was a video day today.
Yes, it was. I hope you enjoyed the show.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Commissioners, we did not receive any email public agenda item by the 5 o'clock deadline last night, so there was no email. I do have three people signed up, but I think they're questioned if they really want to speak or not. Andrew Crane, did you want to speak? Okay, I didn't think so. And then we had Mary Eumann. Was Mary here? Wanted to speak, address the commission? I don't see. And Melissa Wilber? And I don't see Melissa Wilber here either. Okay. And no other, nobody else here to address the commission and the public agenda? Okay, we will move on. Next item, please.
Proclamations, item A. Proclamation declaring world no tobacco day.
Commissioners, we have a proclamation in front of us. I'll read it for us. Whereas no tobacco day informs the public on the dangers of using tobacco. And whereas an estimated 28.3 million adults in the United States currently smoke cigarettes and 16 million Americans live with a smoking-related disease. And whereas cigarette smoking remains the leading US cause of preventable disease, causing various cancers, cardiovascular disease, respiratory conditions, low birth weight, and adverse health outcomes. And whereas secondhand smoke causes approximately 7,330 deaths from lung cancer and 33,950 deaths from heart disease each year. And whereas each day about 1,600 young people try their first cigarette. And whereas the Kansas Tobacco Quit Line, called Can Quit, provides free 24-by-7 one-on-one coaching for Kansans ready to quit using a form of tobacco, including vaping. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman Peter F. Meitzner, and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby recognize May 31st, 2023, as World No Tobacco Day and urge residents who use tobacco to seek out resources to help them quit. This is done today, May 24th, 2023. Commissioners, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to accept is Adrian Burn, our Director of Cedric County Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Burn, Health Director. So World No Tobacco Day has been observed worldwide for 36 years and it's to raise awareness about the harmful effects of tobacco and to promote the health benefits of a tobacco-free lifestyle. So we know that quitting smoking has health benefits at any age, no matter how long or how much someone has smoked. During the first year after quitting, coughing and shortening of breaths decrease. After one to two years, the risk of heart attack drops sharply. After three to six, the risk of coronary heart disease drops by half. And after 10 years, the added risk of lung cancer from smoking also decreases by half. So what can we do to encourage people to stop using tobacco? Well, promote the awareness of the Kansas Tobacco Quit Line, Can Quit, as Chairman Meitzner mentioned. It is free help for anyone that is wanting to stop using tobacco and they are available seven days a week, 24 hours a day, through phone or even text or email if someone doesn't want to call. And that there's also free quit medication for most who enroll and this could be nicotine patches, gum, or lozenges, or a combination of. And studies have shown that phone, coaching, and quit medications combined doubles a person's success rate for quitting. Also encourage people to use their insurance benefits. KenCare, which is Medicaid, Medicare, and employee-sponsored health insurance do include quit benefits. You can contact your benefit provider for information and also the Can Quit coaches have information on benefits as well. And then educate young people about health risks of smoking and vaping. And Cedric County Health Department, we do provide no-cost taking-down tobacco prevention education. It's a 50-minute informational opportunities, whether small groups or a larger auditorium, and it's geared- and it's geared towards grade 6 through 12 students, school staff, and parents, community, youth organization, and someone would just need to contact the Sedgwick County Health Department, and we'll connect them with the person that does provide that training. And so thank you again for recognizing World No Tobacco Day, and it is May 31st.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, thank you. Adrian, thank you for bringing this, bringing this to us today. I do have a couple of questions for you. Is this the first time we've done this proclamation as a county?
It's been a number of years.
I'm in my ninth year, and I don't remember ever doing this one in my nine years being here, so I think it's the first time I've seen it.
The World Day, possibly.
Yeah, okay. And it's interesting, I went on the website, there is a, if you go to the World Health Organization, and you look, they have a sub-page that talks about No Tobacco Day, and there's every year, you can read every year. This year is 2023, there's a whole page, and there's lots of graphics there, lots of comments there, and I was surprised to find out that, as I read the proclamation today, the emphasis of the proclamation, which I voted for just now, is stopping smoking, primarily. And I would say, let me just say, whether you agree with me or not, smoking tobacco is by far the most dangerous use of tobacco, by far. Smoking tobacco kills 400,000 Americans each and every year, and there's 2 million Americans on the process of dying. That doesn't compare with anything else I can think of. I am very passionate about people stopping smoking. I have never smoked cigarettes. I don't vape. I have not vaped. I don't smoke cigars. I don't use tobacco. Both of my parents suffered lifelong, as lifelong smokers. They both have passed now. My father especially is a good example of someone who chain-smoked most of his life, and I have no doubt he had a short, a short life because of his bad habit of smoking. So this impacts me personally in terms of my family loss, and so I am passionate about this topic, but it frustrates me just a little bit when we blur the lines between smoking tobacco and the word tobacco. The World Health Organization is what pushes, pushes out this, this movement of No Tobacco Day, and the vast majority of the information on No Tobacco 2023, go look it up, is about the farming of tobacco. It's about harming, they use the word poisoning the planet, cutting down trees, microplastic waste from people who don't dispose of their cigarette, dispose of their products in a proper way. It's about encouraging farmers not to grow tobacco, but to grow food instead, as if there's a food shortage in this country. It talks about not subsidizing the, the production of tobacco, and on it goes. It's about governments stopping the subsidization of tobacco growing. And again, I don't think that's a problem in Kansas, or certainly not a problem in Sedgwick County. So the proclamation today is primarily about, primarily about smoking cessation, and I think that is well-intentioned, well-intended, and I completely agree with that. I don't know that I agree with the idea, I think the World Health Organization and this particular movement of No Tobacco Day has, is misguided because it's focusing on things that are far removed from smoking cessation. It's about harming the planet by consumption of trees and consumption of water, and pollution of products going back into the environment in a non, in a non-good, not in a, not in a very productive way, I should say. So I, I did vote for the proclamation today. I wish it was a proclamation about stopping smoking. That, I'd be, I'd be much more passionate about. This one, unfortunately, is more politically correct than I feel comfortable with. I wish it was a little bit different. And the World Health Organization, in this movement, they are, they are bringing a focus to governments to stop subsidizing and better use of resources like trees and water. And so I am a little bit, although I support the idea of stopping smoking, I don't know that this is the right proclamation exactly for Sedgwick County. It doesn't quite fit with what I think we ought to be focusing on. In terms of the Board of Health, I want to encourage people through education and through support to stop smoking cigarettes, whatever that means. Please stop smoking cigarettes. It's, it's killing people all around us, even in Sedgwick County. And smoking tobacco is, it produces between 4,000 and 6,000 byproducts, chemicals that you inhale into your lungs, about 70 of those, or 70 or 80 of those are known carcinogens. And so smoking tobacco is incredibly harmful, and it kills more people than anything else I can think of that's a choice, a behavior, a behavioral choice. It's interesting to me that with all the piece, the political correctness around the issue of the word tobacco, some of the very same people are promoting the legalization of marijuana, and I don't know why that is. In fact, they want to legalize the, the smoking of marijuana. So we're having a dual debate here about legalizing marijuana, smoking marijuana, producing marijuana in Kansas. Meanwhile, we're focusing on No Tobacco Day, which is frankly is a worldwide, World, World Health Organization effort, primarily, it's not about smoking, it's about all kinds of other things. So I appreciate the proclamation today. I rarely speak about these proclamations, but this is one I feel like, I try, and I tried to, I tried to intercept this one before it became onto the agenda, to make some adjustments to the language. Unfortunately, I did not have the chance to do that. So hopefully, if this comes to us, comes to us next year, I'd like to see us change the, the content of this proclamation to be more focused on smoking, and I wouldn't necessarily follow the World Health Organization's lead. I think we should, we should do this independently on our own. We know what's wrong with smoking, smoking tobacco. I could write this proclamation about smoking tobacco. I think we could do that. I would support that. I just want to make sure we don't blur the lines between what I just stated about the harm, harmful effects of smoking tobacco with the political efforts of the World Health Organization. And with that, thank you so much for bringing it to us.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Adrian, thank you very much for bringing this to us today. I can speak from experience. When I entered the Air Force in 1968, everybody smoked. You weren't macho. If you put the uniform on, you didn't smoke. And so everybody had to prove how macho they were, and so everybody smoked. As a matter of fact, when I got to Germany in 69, a pack of cigarettes cost 10 cents. Oh, and a bottle of Hanukkah also cost 10 cents over in Germany. And so it was just natural. Everybody smoked. And then when I got a little bit wiser, I said, well, this is not good for my health. It was difficult for me to stop smoking, because I was up about a pack or so a day. And one thing I learned is that anytime I had a cup of coffee, I had to have a cigarette. You'll notice there's never coffee in front of me. I quit them both in order to be able to stop smoking. So now I don't die, do, that's where I get my caffeine today. But we started out with the, speaking about older Americans, and I kind of resemble that, Part of the reason I got to this point, because I believe, is because I did stop smoking. And so I think it has contributed to the health that I enjoy today. So I am definitely a non-smoker. I don't like to be in the room with anyone that smokes, or I don't, anytime I get in a car that anyone has smoked in, you can tell it immediately if you're an ex-smoker. So thanks for bringing this to our attention and bringing it to the forefront for the community, because it is very important that people stop smoking. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Item B. Proclamation declaring Emergency Medical Services Week.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to read the proclamation regarding EMS. It says, whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the dedicated paramedics and emergency medical technicians of Sedgwick County Emergency Medical Services are committed to providing exemplary medical care and ambulance transportation to the citizens of Sedgwick County. And whereas Sedgwick County EMS is ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency health care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services consists of emergency medical technicians, advanced emergency medical technicians, paramedics, EMS educators, EMS support staff, and EMS administrators. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or voluntary, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 2023, the 2023 theme for EMS Week is, quote, "Where Emergency Care Begins." I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Mr. Chairman, I would be very pleased to make a motion to adopt this proclamation.
Okay. I'll second that. And, oh yeah, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And to receive the proclamation today, we have Angela Hamilton with EMS.
Good morning, Commissioners. Angela Hamilton, Deputy Chief of Operations for EMS. Chief Lannerman could not be here today, so we are so appreciative of accepting this proclamation for EMS Week. We provide services 24/7/365, and we get one week out of the year that kind of celebrates us and takes the time that, that we recognize our providers. Obviously, I want to recognize Alora in the, in the audience, because our chain of survival does not, does not start with us. It actually starts with the 911 dispatchers that take the call and get us to the people at their time of need. I have several of our employees, because this is really what it's about, is, is all of our providers that, that take care of the public, treat everyone equally. We, we would not be who we are without them. So we continue to appreciate your support through our E2P program, which is our pipeline for our paramedic students, as well as the county staff and management that continue to support our organization and growth.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
I just wanted to, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say, I'm incredibly proud of you all. Thank you so much for what you do for this community. We have a tremendous, part of what we do here at Sedgwick County is public safety, and a huge chunk of that is completely in your field, and I trust you. I know that if I have a, a need, that when you show up, you're, you're skilled, you are experienced, you're knowledgeable, and I know my life and my, my health is in great hands, and this community can, can just know. Rest assured, we have a tremendous, robust EMS services program here in Sedgwick County, because we have great people who do a tremendous job. So thank you for all you do. And by the way, thanks for the picnic last night. It was wonderful.
Yeah. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank everyone. I know that Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Howell and I were at a picnic last night, and we enjoyed that very much. Thank you very much for what you do. We did see your T-shirts last night when we were at the picnic, and this morning, we found them on our desk, and we want to thank you very much for that, too. So we appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
We provided T-shirts with all of our employees that are allowed to wear T-shirts on their EMS Week that deviate from their normal uniform, which I think they enjoy and probably wish we had all summer.
That's really nice. Well, thank you again, and heartfelt appreciation from all of us, and your work goes unnoticed until somebody really needs it. So thank you very much. I think we want to get a picture. If you all want to parade right here in front of the, in front of the desk?
Oh, man.
You gonna stand in the middle?
Absolutely.
All right? Hello? Maybe I have to have two rows, if you... Get a couple rows. Wow. Quite a gang. Okay. That would be a good front, though. Just stick her in the front, leave it. Just stick her in the front.
While they're working their way back to the chairs, you might have noticed that Lisa Corr was standing in the picture, and she was in the video earlier, and she was in this today, so today is Lisa Corr Day as well. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item C. Resolution appointing Sidney Phillips to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council.
Mr. Papun?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Councilor. We just have one appointment today. This is an appointment by Commissioner Lopez to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council. It's her recommendation that we appoint Sidney Phillips to this board. If you remember, this is a 14-member board enacted from a joint resolution ordinance with the City of Wichita. Sedgwick County gets seven appointments. Each county commissioner gets one appointment, then there are two at-large positions as well. This particular appointment, Ms. Phillips fills the niche of a small food processor and value-added product manager role of the Food Council. There are a number of suggested appointment positions in this board. With the appointment of Ms. Phillips, we will have all the commissioner appointments set, and we're just waiting on the county manager to appoint his at-large appointment. So the resolution is in proper form, and ask you to approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Just really fast, I think it's interesting. We have highlighted Lisa a few times today, and this is going to be another additional one, because Lisa brought Cindy's name to me for this, and I really appreciate that. So I'm very happy and thankful to have Cindy who's willing to serve on the sport, and I will move that we adopt the resolution.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Is she here?
Oh, is she here? I'm sorry. My apologies, yes. Here to be sworn in. Ms. Cindy, is that how it's spelled, Cindy Phillips?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Cindy. Commissioners?
Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, for the appointment. I appreciate it. Happy to serve.
Thank you for being available to serve. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item D. Presentation of Mini NPA Certificates.
Okay. Who is here? Melissa Walker?
Good morning. My name is Mercy Umarie from the Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs, and I'm also the coordinator of the Mini NPA Program. Before I continue, I just want to say thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for the opportunity to be here today and to present the certificates. And I also want to say thank you, sir, Tom Stoles, for our participants have an opportunity, not just to learn from, you know, our faculty member and subject matter experts, but they have an opportunity to learn from other practitioners in other different counties and cities around Kansas. And today, we are here to celebrate them by presenting the certificates. They spend 16 weeks, every Friday morning from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and in those 16 weeks, they all stayed engaged and committed, and today we are here to celebrate them. Thank you. So as I call your name, you step up, receive your certificate. Nicole has asked that when you come up to take the certificate, that you wait on here, because they would like to take a group picture after the presentation. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Elena Moreno.
Happy to serve.
Thank you for being available to serve. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, Item D, Presentation of Mini MPA Certificates.
Okay, who is here? Melissa Walker?
Good morning. My name is Mercy Umarri from the Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs, and I'm also the Coordinator of the Mini MPA Program. Before I continue, I just want to say thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for the opportunity to be here today and to present the certificates. And I also want to say thank you, sir, Tom Stoles, for our participants have an opportunity, not just to learn from, you know, our faculty member and subject matter experts, but they have an opportunity to learn from other practitioners in other different counties and cities around Kansas. And today, we are here to celebrate them by presenting the certificates. They spend 16 weeks every Friday morning from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and in those 16 weeks, they all stayed engaged and committed, and today, we are here to celebrate them. Thank you. So as I call your name, you step up, receive your certificate. Nicole has asked that when you come up to take the certificate, that you wait on here because they would like to take a group picture after the presentation. Thank you. Alena Moreno. I also wanted to say that we had representations from different departments, so HR, Finance, Emergency Medical Services, Animal Control, IT, Communications, Central Services, and the Fleet Management Department. Nika Orebo. Is Nika here? Okay. No? Okay. Israel Ramos. Okay. Corey Stokes. I saw Corey, okay. Congratulations. Kevin already informed us that he would not be here, so. Kevin Lenterman. Carrie Marlin. Congratulations. Lizette Foster. Congratulations. Bo Bergeron. Congrats. Arienne Cooper. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Very good. Next item, please. Oh yeah, let's do a, on the previous item, we'll do a motion to receive and file. We'll make a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. Congratulations again to everybody. Next item, please.
Item E, Signing Day and WSU Tech Update.
Well, we are fortunate to have Dr. Sheri Utash in front of us.
Thank you, Chairman Meitzner, and thank you Commissioners for allowing me to be here. I'm Sheri Utash, President of WSU Tech. And just going to give you a little bit of an update, like everything we've been hearing this morning, May is a big month of celebration. So I'm going to start with, and I also have a couple of videos too, so, but I'm going to start with, we had our commencement last week, and we had the largest graduating class in the 58-year history of WSU Tech. I call this our Super Bowl, and so I play it up all year, and this is the Super Bowl, and this is what we're doing. And we graduated 1,012 students. We've never had over 1,000. You may remember, just 15 short years ago, we would be fortunate to have a graduating class of 100. So we had 1,000 graduates. We had over 370 that walked, the largest group we've ever had walk, at our Super Bowl. So, you know, that's just a little bit of, of what we're doing and what we celebrated this May. But to get to that, you know, we're now serving about 9,000 students a year in some way, shape, or form. And to get to there, we're finding that recruiting is very, very different than it used to be. So I want to share with you one of the things that actually WSU Tech and Washburn Tech began seven years ago, and it has now become a phenomenon across the nation. And we have had over 252-year colleges across the nation have National Signing Day. It started here in Kansas, WSU Tech, and Washburn Tech, the dean at Washburn and I were sitting one time, actually over a beer, and we said, why don't we honor students the same way that we do athletes? So this is what happened.
It's Signing Day 2023!
It's a great day here at WSU Tech where we are giving high school seniors $1,000 to pursue career and technical education at WSU Tech next fall. Here comes a student right now.
My name is Sienna Chavez, and I go to May South High School.
My name is Trace, and I go to Mulvaney High School.
I go to Jefferson-Less High School.
Chester Lewis Learning Center.
Valley Center High School.
Southeast High School.
And I'm from West High School.
I go to Anderson Central High School.
My name is White, and I go to Derby High School.
I'm excited to come here this fall for the Alternative Fuels Program.
I'm interested in the AMT Program.
Construction Science Program.
Interior Design.
Veterinary Nursing.
I'm interested in the Automotive Program.
Digital Marketing.
The Welding Program.
I am interested in being a registered nurse.
These students have committed their education to WSU Tech.
We wanted to be here for Signing Day because we think it's so important.
To help students understand the world of possibility when you explore career and technical education.
So we're very keen on what's happening with the next generation and helping people see what are the possibilities.
Someday I want to be a cybersecurity technician.
I just want to work on airplanes.
Someday I want to be a car mechanic, and I want to have my own shop.
Someday I want to make monsters and animatronics.
So I want to become an EMT, be a first responder. I'm just super excited and proud of myself to accomplish my dream and my goal.
I want to dedicate my success to my dad because he's a hard-working man, and I get that from him.
I would like to dedicate my success to my parents and my siblings.
Parents for being on me about grades, and myself for doing the work.
And I'm tremendously excited today for all young students across the country, and congratulations, and look forward to seeing you in the future.
We're here at WSU Tech for National Signing Day.
You get $1,000.
You get $1,000.
You get $1,000.
I know, who doesn't love free money?
Let's go!
It's pretty great. It's a pretty good day.
So like I said, they all get a $1,000 scholarship offered to them. We had 201 students attend, 150 of those are enrolled for fall. So very, very good outcome on this. But the cool thing about this is the whole idea of celebrating the dignity of choosing a career in technical education, in choosing this as your next step, and celebrating that in the same way that we do when decisions are made, when, when high school students decide to pursue athletics at a post-secondary. So again, over 250 schools across the nation have done it. I don't think any of them do it as good as we do, but they're all doing it, and it's, it's becoming a, a really, really great way to celebrate students and their choices and their families. The other thing that we, another thing that we have done recently is we've gone in, we've, we've gone into athletics, but this is the only athletics we're doing. So we are, we are happy to say we're an NJCAA. We have an esports team that is recognized by NJCAA. We were national champs last year, and we took this same idea to Signing Day, and we did a little Signing Day with those students. Let's see, and what happened with that? I'm going to look and see. We had 20 students, this is, this will be our largest esports team. Four of those received scholarships, but this is becoming quite a phenomenon across the United States too, and I don't begin to understand it, but it is very interesting to watch, and the, I mean, they get, they just play, play video games against each other, but here's the thing, against people all across the country, and they play against teams all across the country. But here's the thing that I've really learned about it. You strip that away, you, you know, you take the part of the video games away, here's what's, here's what they're really learning. They're learning teamwork, they're learning critical thinking skills, they're learning how to solve problems, they're learning how to communicate. And so there are some very, very great indirect benefits that are coming to these students that are doing esports. So I said we'd never do athletics, this is the only athletics we're going to do, but we have gotten into this, and it's been really good, and it's another way to meet students where they are and provide them an opportunity to do what they love to do while they're going to school. And these 25 students came from all kinds of different disciplines across the college because we don't have an esports degree. The other thing that we've done is, you may have, I hope you've been to NICH, we have opened, we've got a soft opening going, we, we opened this building that has been vacant since 1984, and it's beautifully renovated, it's, it's a great space. We started in January with 60 students there. We plan to build that to probably 125 to 150 over the next three years. We had our first six graduates of our culinary program walk across the stage this last week, I guess. And we have, we had an event recently, creating the Henry Society and unveiling the name of the Rooftop Event Center, and it is the Henry's Place. So we now have, we have events that are being booked and being celebrated there. We have a student-run restaurant in the Envision Bistro that will be opening July 12th and serving lunch 11 to 2 Monday through Friday. And then we have several food hall vendor spots, and that's the next thing on our list is to get all of those open by September. Genia's, the, the ramen restaurant is open, it's fabulous, it's very, very good, and we will have a week-long worth of events to celebrate the opening of NICH, which is the National Institute for Culinary and Hospitality Education in September. So just kind of wanted to give you an update on that. The other thing I would say is, you know, we're always thinking about what's next, so I'll just put a few things out there. We, we have a new two-year Para-Educator Degree that is on the consent agenda for the Board of Regents next month, and we have partnered with Wichita State University on that, so we're very excited about that. We have a new program with Foley Tractor, and we've created an internship for them on their property in their facilities, kind of the, a very new way of delivering learning and creating a workforce for them. We also have been working with Coke Accounting, and we said, we started a Coke Apprenticeship Accounting Program for them here in Wichita, be, two years this August, and we have now expanded that to Atlanta, Georgia with Georgia Pacific, and they have, we have our first 20 accounting students there in Atlanta. We're going to Dallas with this in August. So we are, this is a really cool model that we're working, and it's a partnership between Coke, WSU Tech, and WSU, and it's creating a talent pipeline customized exactly for what they need. So that's a really good deal. You might have seen, we cut the ribbon on the Future Ready Center for Aviation and Manufacturing last Friday. Thank you, Commissioner Beatty, I know you were there, Commissioner Meitzner was there as well, and Commissioner Dennis was there. That is a really cool project we've been working on for a couple of years, and it is going to be a game-changer, I think, for creating a talent pipeline for our aviation and manufacturing industries because we can start those students as juniors and seniors, and they're on building a new semiconductor production curriculum. So the last thing I would leave you with is, not only do we try to recruit students differently, we try to create scholarships opportunities for students differently. So I'm going to show you an event that we have now, we've done it twice, so I guess it's an annual event. We're doing it again in October, and this creates scholarship money not for only us, but for DOC, and the B21, B29 DOC, and so we split what we earn there. Half of it goes to their education efforts at DOC, and half of it goes to student scholarships. So here we go. Here's Pull-a-Plane.
I'm at the DOC Hangar, and we are taking part in the annual Pull-a-Plane Event.
Which is a fundraiser for WSU Tech and for DOC B29. It's a little harder than you think.
Our strategy was just to pull real hard.
You have to squat and use your leg. So that is coming in October, the Wichita Wagon Masters are the reigning champs, they will be there to defend their title. We would love to have teams from Sedgwick County come out and pull. It is a great, it's great fun. I would, I would challenge the Sedgwick County Commissioners to challenge your, your, your neighbors across the street on City Council to have a pull-off. So we would love to have you come. Just finally, I just want to thank you guys so much for your support. WSU Tech is, as you well know, just a microcosm of this community. I say all the time, as business and industry goes, so does WSU Tech, and we could never have done this without the support of Sedgwick County and the Commissioners and all the things that have happened. We've had incredible support to do the work we've done, but we have, we are growing and we are continuing to grow, and we are continuing to see enrollment growth. I don't want to, you know, like, pull out the, the, the party yet or, or declare a parade, but we're up 22% for fall right now. That would be on top of, we have been in, our enrollment has increased every year, including every year of COVID for the last 12 years. So we couldn't do that without a lot of support and a lot of people in this city, you know, cheering us on, but thank you very much for the opportunity to give you an update, and thank you to Chairman Meitzner for his service on our board.
Sheri got a couple of comments, maybe Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Utash, a profound thank you for what you do for this community. It's been fun to watch the progression of WSU Tech over the last decade plus, and just where you've come from and what you're doing. You fulfill an incredible role in this community, the pipeline of our future workforce, and it's not just any, you're not just placing people into any old job, it's cutting-edge, it's innovative, it's modernized, and you're setting a model here that nationally people can glean from. It's the gold standard, in my opinion, and a lot of that is due to your leadership and your, and your team's leadership, and, and I just, I, I just want to make sure you know and understand that, that this community thanks you for what you're doing, and the leadership you provide and everything that's happening at WSU Tech, we're excited and we're grateful. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Dennis?
Dr. Utash, thank you very much for being here and what you do. We did join you at North High, and I taught as a career in tech ed teacher at North High, so it was near and dear to my heart. Did that after I retired from the Air Force. Workforce is one of the things that we are very concerned about in the future because we keep expanding, but we need the workers in order to be able to, to meet all of the needs for the future. And the nice thing about it, we're also diversifying at the same time because we can't just expand in one area, because if we keep growing and get into the tech field more and more, WSU serves that niche for us. And I am very proud of the previous Commissioners that were on this bench before us that had the vision to help develop something like WSU Tech. I certainly hope that we have that same kind of vision as we move forward, but that made all the difference in the world. We're going to hear a briefing here pretty quick on the InTrust Brank Arena. Again, it was before all of us that were on this bench today, but the Commissioners had a vision, and it makes a difference in our community. The Commissioners had a, earlier, a vision on Sedgwick County Park and the Sedgwick County Zoo, so that, things happen because of Sedgwick County, and I, I am proud of, of the history that we have here in Sedgwick County, and I hope that the five of us can live up to the, to the bar that has been set by previous Commissioners, but thank you very much for what you do.
Eric, thank you. It's, it's an honor to, to serve on your board, and, and the meetings are open, and any Commissioner I've invited, if they wanted to see success stories, and you always are entertained by, by a video, and some of them bring tears to our eyes, and, but the accomplishments have been incredible, as Commissioner Beatty nicely summarized, and I'll never forget And I'll never forget, one time when somebody said, what's, what's your mission? And Sherry says, well, our mission is we change lives. And you do, you've changed lives and it's just profound. And so thank you for your service and obviously the staff. And I know that your staff thinks I'm, I'm the favorite, favorite board member, but that's all right. So, okay. Commissioner Howe.
Absolute truth.
Sherry, thank you. Thank you as a friendship too.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate this update. I always love hearing the great things that are going on out there, but I am curious, can you, can you talk about two things? One of those is Senate Bill 155. Is it still being funded? Is it expanding? What's your, what's the impact of Senate Bill 155? I think it was passed in 2013 roughly, about 10 years ago. What's, what impacts that have on, on your operation today?
Oh, tremendous impact. It's one of the finest pieces of legislation that ever came through Kansas, in my opinion. Because that, and it's continued to be funded and it's, it's, it's continued to have funding added to it. But what it's allowed us to do is, you know, you think about 15, well, not even 15 years ago, 10 years ago, you know, we probably had 70 high school students. Today we're serving over 3,000, probably 3,300. And it's, you know, what it's doing is it's allowing those high school kids to start in a career technical education pathway as juniors. And the state pays their tuition and we pick up everything else. We're, we're, you know, we pay for their tools, their books, I mean, all these other, these other ancillary costs, we're picking up. The state picks up their tuition. What that does is it allows those students, for instance, last Tuesday night at commencement, we had over 100 high school students that walked. Now, we have more than that that graduated, but we had 100 that walked that are getting their, they were getting their technical certificate or associate of applied science degree from us. And they were getting their diploma within, you know, three or four days either way of that event from their high schools. One of our student speakers was a young woman from, a young lady from Northwest High School who had, who was, who had received her patient care tech NISHN certificate from us and graduating from high school the next night in Coke Arena, both nights. And she has a job at Ascension that she has had because we put her through into an applied learning opportunity. And she has a full-time job as she now moves to Wichita State University to go into their nursing program. She has a full-time job and they've moved her to our lead position as a patient care tech. That's just one of lots and lots of examples of what Senate Bill 155 has done and how it's evolved. And it is, it's, it's been an incredible game changer, in my opinion. And I know we have workforce issues, but boy, I'll tell you, we would have had a lot more had we not had SB 155.
I'm reflecting on that legislation. I think it was in 2012 because I, I was in the House Education Committee when that bill came up and I was able to add some language to the bill specifically for private school students as well. That's a piece that I put in there and proudly voted for that. And I'm so thankful that that continues to be funded by the state of Kansas. I think it's making a huge difference. You're making a whole, you're making a bunch of Doogie Howzers, Doogie Howzers, right? That's what you're making today.
And, and we serve private schools, homeschools and public schools. So it's, it's a game changer. It, it is a huge game changer. I hope it never, I hope it's always funded by the state. Thank, thank you to you when you were a legislator and all the legislation legislators since then that continue to see the value of that and continue to fund it.
It's been a great investment for the state of Kansas and it's made a huge difference. But the second question I wanted to ask you was this. I know you tracked this, but I haven't heard the number today that maybe I missed it, but your, your employment rate of your graduates, can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Our placement rate is right, for last year was 89%. And what that means is 89% of the students that completed a program have either gone to work in their field that they were educated in, they're continuing their education at a four-year institution, or they're in the military. So 89%, it's like our report card. It's like what we do, you know, if, you know, and we, we, we try to stay between 88 and 92%. And we've been very consistent with that over the last several years. And surprisingly, not a huge dip even during COVID. So that speaks to that essential workforce. That speaks to the fact that, you know, people are needing jobs. And, and there's work out there for, for the, you know, for the talent that we're producing into that pipeline. So 89%. Here's the other thing too, I think is so important that I should share with you, is 97% stay right here in Sedgwick County.
Wow.
We don't have that, we don't have the outmigration necessarily. They, they're, they're here because they want to be here. And they're here because they know what they want to do. You go into a group of, an auditorium with all these students and they want to be a nurse or they want to be, you know, an engineer or they want to be an airplane mechanic, whatever. They know what they want to do and they know that they can get that education, but they also know the opportunities are right here.
Well, I want to say thank you to WSU Tech and your board and all that you guys do to make our community better. WSU Tech is making a huge difference. As a parent or, or as a student that gets started there, they can reduce some of their education costs and, and rest assured, their success opportunities are huge. They'll come out the other end of that pipeline with great opportunities. And so your track record shows that and I want to say thank you again for, for all you do for this community. Thank you, Chairman.
Matt. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much for being here today. I, I get really excited every time I hear you speak. So I always know there's going to be something new and it's going to be so great for our community. And I think speaking to the fact that so many of your students are staying here and helping us build this workforce that we know we're continuing to need more and more of and, and think, I just, I don't know how we thank you enough for the work and the innovative thoughts that you have that allow this to happen. So thank you and your team. I know Pete's a part of it, so we'll thank Pete again. But I just appreciate everything that you guys are doing for Sedgwick County and really for the state of Kansas.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. And you represent our, our whole state and our region well. You recently were in Washington DC at a senate hearing representing tech colleges. And that's very impressive and thank you for representing our region and everything. And you were one of what, five or six panelists there?
Yeah. We, Senator Moran arranged and it was on the aviation, it's on the FAA reauthorization and the aviation tax bills that they're working through. And we've made some really good progress. I don't know exactly what's going to happen, but we're continuing to have conversation. So it was an honor and a privilege to represent Wichita, Sedgwick County and the state of Kansas on that national level. It's just, you know, my, my job is so fun. I have the best job ever. I just have the best job ever. Who wouldn't want to be in the life-changing business?
You are a life changer. Good job. Okay, any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to receive and file the report. Motion in a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item F, Presentation of the InTrust Bank Arena Report.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Povrussel, your Chief Financial Officer. There's a joke there, I'll tell you all later. So I am here this morning with AJ Beleski from the InTrust Bank Arena to give you our first update on arena operations. It's very depressing to realize the last time we were talking about this was February 12th, 2020, just before the pandemic kicked in. So while we are here to focus primarily on 2022 operations, we are going to talk briefly through the presentation about 2020 and 2021 activity, though it is certainly not what we have become used to seeing out of the arena over the decade that it was open. So we've already had a great kickoff to this year. AJ will regale us here toward the end of the presentation with all of the exciting things we have to look forward to in 2023 and even in the next couple of years, including as, as dear to many of our hearts, NCAA tournament information. So I want to say thank you, before we get into this, obviously to AJ and to his team at the arena. That includes his Assistant General Manager Tyler Slanovic, his Finance Director Amanda Brown, Sarah McLachlan, who's their Accounting Manager. And then of course, I want to thank our team, especially Jessica Osmeier, who put in all of the legwork to make this presentation happen. So with that, we will jump right in. Also, I did want to make one comment after piggybacking on what Commissioner Dennis said. Quality of life is a huge part of what brings people here for workforce. I also wanted to talk about the pull a plane. That's very exciting. Work comp doesn't cover that, so please be careful if you decide to participate. So wanted to make sure I mentioned that. So getting to this presentation, what we're going to focus on today, just a quick refresher on how we got here. This is a unique arrangement for the county to have a management agreement with ASM Global, who operates the facility. We also had a unique opportunity due to COVID to pursue some federal funding. Shuttered Venue Operators Grant funding, $10 million was received by the county and had a tremendous impact and ability to keep our reserve fund whole through COVID, so we'll talk about that. We'll quickly look at some of the annual reports again for 2020 through 2022, just so you can see what attendance looked like, the type of arena events. Of course, the financials for those. We'll talk about the sales tax reserve, which I know is something that we all also pay close attention to. And then finally, AJ will come up, tell us a little bit about how the arena has been involved in our community, as well as tell us, like I said, what we have to look forward to. Now this focuses on operations. A lot of times folks will, will look at county financials and see depreciation on the building and all of those things. That information is available in our quarterly financial report or upcoming audit. Today is focusing strictly on the arena itself. So just as a refresher, back in the day, ASM Global was known as SMG. We entered into an agreement with them through an RFP process for them to operate our facility back in 2007. Then in 2019, SMG merged with AEG Facility, so two very large entities that are really international, to form ASM Global. So our contract still remains with SMG, but we refer to them as ASM Global because that is their company name. So sometimes you'll see documents that interchange those two, but they are the same company. ASM Global is responsible to promote, operate and manage the facility, to ensure high-quality management services. So basically maximizing our public's opportunity to access the arena, diverse events and lots of different things to do and add to our quality of life. We do have a unique arrangement and that is that ASM Global will, they don't take a management fee in the course of a year, but they will incur any operating losses during the course of a normal year. Now, of course, you have a pandemic intervening. There's nothing that anyone could have anticipated on that. So that, of course, happened in 2020. Just as a reminder, the arena was funded through a 30-month voter-approved 1% sales tax. Collections from July 2005 through December 2007 totaled 206.5 million. All of those sales tax dollars did come to the county, unlike other sales tax dollars that are split with cities. Through the course of the project, buying the property, demolishing buildings, construction costs, all of the work related to that project was 191 million. And so that gave us a balance of about 15 million when the facility opened to use to help provide CIP and keep the arena up to the standards to which the public expected when they made that vote. And the arena actually opened and had its first show January 9th, 2010. The reason I am here talking to you about this today as your CFO is I am also the contract administrator. So the management agreement that was signed between the county and ASM Global delegates a lot of the authority of the liaising between the two entities to a contract administrator. The county manager is responsible for appointing that position and I was appointed to this at the same time I became CFO in December of 2016. We do serve though, while Mike Papoun was here from the very beginning, I caught him off guard again, yes. He and Tom and I serve on the CIP committee together. So while the management agreement allows the contract administrator to approve an operating budget, a CIP and an operations plan each year, the CIP portion is done after some requests made by the Commission in 2019. All of that actually goes through the three of us before any of those things are approved. Speaking of the agreement with ASM Global, as we mentioned, back in 2020, we did have a pandemic. Under the terms of the management agreement, there was a force majeure clause, basically act of God. And so what that meant was either party basically could give proper notice and get out of the agreement. The county decided we did not, we had invested enough, we had just signed a new agreement, long-term agreement with ASM Global. We did not want to get out of that. And so we actually entered into an amendment for 2021, but in 2020, under the force majeure provisions, the county was responsible for underwriting any operating loss. Not to say that ASM Global did not cut back severely. They had furloughs. AJ was working overnight as security. They were doing everything they could. Obviously, they worked with us to have some special events, which we'll talk about later in this presentation. But certainly, we know that that was a unique time period in 20, for the amendment number five, 2021, was actually a specified agreement. So instead of just operating under the force majeure provisions, we actually agreed to have a management fee that was paid in monthly installments to the arena folks, about 200,000. And then what that agreement said was that in a month, if there was actually operating income, that would come to the county. If there was an operating loss, the county would reimburse ASM Global from the arena reserve. So there was an intervening circumstance with SVOG that actually made this a lot better. Unfortunately, COVID didn't get better a lot faster or as fast as we expected. So that was a lot of months of operating losses. So shuttered Venue Operators Grant became available to folks who were impacted mainly through venues, who had been impacted by COVID, if they could demonstrate the loss and had certain requirements. Those are outlined here on this slide. With a ton of assistance from ASM Global with all of their financials and details, as well as our support from DRS, the county was able to put in an application that was successful. We received an initial award in September of 2021 of just nine, just at 9.5 million. We were able to put in for a supplemental award. The cap that any one entity could receive was $10 million and so we actually were able to get there. And if you remember, the Commission approved a number of different agenda items over the course of several months associated with this agreement. We were able to update the audio visual system in three of the meeting rooms at the arena as business shifted to Zoom and remote instead of in-person and travel. The telescopic seating, I'm going to remind you, these are the retractable seats that come down and around the floor of the arena. That would have been a hefty lift for the county to have to pay that out of the reserve fund over the course of multiple years. And so we were grateful for the funding to be able to do that all in one fell swoop. And then more importantly than anything else, and we'll get into this as we get into the finances, we were able to recoup every bit of the operating loss and actually position both ASM Global and the county to actually have some operating income through the course of those years, so that it was not all a complete loss. So this was an extremely fortunate set of circumstances. We are very grateful to our friends at ASM Global for their relentless pursuit of this grant. So getting into our annual reports, I'm not going to read these slides to you, but you may flag Slide eight and refer back to it as we get into the next few charts, so that if you have questions about what's included in a specific category, you can quickly reference back and see what that is. I will tell you, the one that we focus on obviously is the net building income. So in 2020, this was so sad. If you all remember, this was going to be the 10-year anniversary. It was huge. Tons of great acts lined up. We had the big announcement over at the arena for George Strait, the Commission authorized our friends at the arena. Those staff put together those kits for us and took care of distributing those. We also were able to use it as a mega site for the 2020 general election. That's not typically available to us because that's a great time for shows and we obviously have shows that make a little more money than having an election, but it was a fantastic opportunity due to those circumstances. It also was used as a vaccination location and a test collection site for COVID. And I well remember the pictures of all of those things, telling you, this was a very sad trip down memory lane preparing for this presentation. In 2020, we had 44 performances, 29 events. You can see there were only six concerts. The Wichita Thunder Hockey only got to have nine of their games in the facility in 2020. All of their season was moved into 2021, so you'll see that reflected. All of their season was moved into 2021, so you'll see that reflected in a couple of slides. So while 44 performances sounds good, it's not as good as what we had become used to prior to the pandemic. And there will be a contrast slide here later in the presentation to show that. The folks at the arena were still able to get some community groups in to, to provide service for some of those shows that they could make some money. They still spent about $1.5 million with Sedgwick County Companies, and they paid more than $670,000 in sales taxes, of which a portion, of course, came back to the county and cities in the county. At the end of 2020, before SVOG came onto the scene, the net operating loss for the facility was $444,185. And that was an amount that the county cut a check for at the end of the year due to that force majeure provision to ASM Global. So then 2021 comes along. We still have, as AJ reminded me earlier, we still have some capacity restrictions. We still have the six feet of distance that's between everyone, so that required some special work by the arena staff. And again, Thunder Hockey came into their, they had two seasons, basically, that they played in 2021. So they had 51 games. You can see there were a handful of other events that were able to be held in 2021. As opposed to 2020, there were actually 83 performances with attendance of about 133,000 people. You can see the Wichita Thunder Hockey had a lot of performances and events, much higher than usual, and our concerts were still much lower than what we are used to. You can see the community affairs, we still had about $697,000 worth of spending with Sedgwick County Companies and $400,000 worth of sales taxes paid. So SVOG came to us in 2021 and again helped make us whole and helped our, our colleagues at ASM Global significantly with our financial operations as well. So what this top table shows you is the bottom line for the operations for the arena until the second table comes into play, SVOG came. So we were able to use the shuttered venue operators grant to reimburse for certain operating costs, including personnel, utilities, insurance and things like that. So we were able to apply roughly 4.2 million of that $10 million SVOG grant toward those costs. And so once we factor that in, the net building income for 2021 was roughly 2.5 million. So if you remember, I referenced amendment number five. Amendment number five said we'd pay $200,000 in a management fee. We'd get any operating income, ASM Global would, we would reimburse ASM Global for any operating loss. Well, because of this 4.2 million that was able to, that we were able to apply, we went back to actually the old terms of the management agreement, where the arena kept the first, or I'm sorry, ASM Global kept the first $400,000, and then we split the difference 50-50. So the result being, and we'll show this in the financials in a bit, we actually netted out $1 million after we did that split that was able to restore that operating or the arena reserve. So then we get a lot closer to normal in 2022. And this slide makes me so happy to have two columns in small font. And I, of course, always have to call out Backstreet Boys as one of the preeminent events that was hosted in 2022, as well as, I know most of us were at the women's basketball championship regional rounds and had a blast. Lots of people showed up for that, lots of great events, very diverse events, from sporting events to country shows to pop shows to rock shows. So this slide here looks a lot more like what we're used to seeing for arena performances. Eighty-four total events, of which 16 were concerts, 37 were the Thunder Hockey. And then you can see the other variety of shows, how those shows on the prior slide fall out into these various categories, and actual attendance of 280,000, so more than double the year before. So definitely looking a lot better. Folks definitely had some pent-up demand to get back to shows and see some events, which was fantastic. There were 14 community event, or community groups that were able to volunteer in concession stands, earning about $360,000. There were five arena tours. We spent, well, the arena spent more than one point, or just about 1.6 million in spending with Sedgwick County Companies and 1.5 million in sales taxes paid. So again, closer to what we were used to seeing historically. So this is great news. When we look at the operations of the building, and again, I said, we want to focus on the net building income line. That's where, again, our profit sharing agreement comes into play. ASM Global keeps the first $400,000 essentially as their management fee. And then anything that is earned beyond that is split half and half between ASM Global and the county, and that funding goes back into the arena reserve. That was just at about $718,000 for 2022. In addition, if you recall, at the end of, and this is not on this slide, but at the end of 2019, when we entered amendment number four, that extended the agreement with ASM Global, we also actually had a mechanism to try and extend the life of the reserve fund, where ASM Global agreed to charge $1.50 facility fee, or, well, they charge a facility fee, but a portion of that, $1.50, was actually to be remitted back to the county. And then we would match whatever that was. So actually, for last year, that was about $260,000. So that goes as also bottom line improvement to our reserve fund, which is good news. So again, talking about contrasting, showing 2022 is back to normal. If you compare it to 2019, the, the last year before, full year before the pandemic hit, we're much closer in terms of the number of performances and getting closer in terms of attendance. So now we'll shift away more from the operations of the arena itself and look at how does that actually impact our arena reserve. So if you recall, we spent, we, we collected 206 million and spent about 191 million in terms of constructing the arena, getting it set up. Over the course of time, that reserve has also been added to through any net operating income that's been received. But we also pay for annual CIP costs, and we've had some larger CIP projects. We did the Arena Entrance C remodel, if you remember, the, the entrance from the north, so that we could draw folks in from Old Town. That was a large project back around 2017, 2018. We also replaced our scoreboard and the marquee that you can see from Kellogg. That was a large investment, again, trying to make sure that we continue to be state of art so that as the WSU team works with our arena team to submit bids for NCAA events, we can remain competitive and also provide a good user experience when we have people there for any type of game, Thunder events or other things. So all of that activity happens from the reserve fund. We also have a, a very old, never been used agreement with the city of Wichita related to parking, so that if there was ever a situation where the city, and it charges for the lots around the arena, if they ever actually lost money, they have an opportunity to come to the county to pursue reimbursement for those losses through the reserve fund. We have never had to use that. And then, of course, it's available to be used for operations at, for the Coleman lot. So for arena sales tax reserves, in the past, we have gone into every single expense in and out in this presentation. I'm more than happy to provide you that information, but seeing that we're covering three years today, we thought we would spare you that and give you the high-level summaries. And so you can see the revenue that was put into the fund. Of course, we have naming rights agreements with three different partners that total 590,000 of income per year. That goes in as revenue. A good portion of that is paid out to ASM Global in order to do signage and other things to maintain the, the, essentially those pavilions or signage for the various naming rights sponsors. We also pay out for any emergency repairs. So there are provisions of the management agreement that say that even above and beyond any of the CIP costs that we may have in the course of a year, if, for example, a chiller breaks or the ice machine, the machines that run the ice create the ice, maintain the ice, if they break, we pay for those. And those have been some significant repairs as those pieces of equipment have aged since the building has been in operation since 2010. So that's reflected in the expenditures. So what you can see is, the bottom line is, at the end of 2022, the reserve balance is down to 4.25 million. Now, that does not include the $718,000 that I told you was coming in as net operating income. That's paid into 2023. It also doesn't include those facility fees that I mentioned, about $250,000 plus the match that will do. So this tells the full story through 2022, but there has yet been activity in 2023 that's not reflected in this slide. So I am happy to answer any questions on the finances. We're happy to field any requests for additional information. I'm happy to put that together. If not, I'll bring AJ to the podium to speak. And then, once he's done, I would ask that you all receive and file the report.
Thank you, Lindsay, for that summary of the last couple of years and the comparison. It's very helpful. Any questions or comments?
We'll get to the fun stuff.
Mr. AJ.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity, AJ Beleski with ASM Global and Trust Bank Arena. Just a big shout out to Lindsay for the presentation and putting that together for us and presenting it for us. Also, a big thank you to Sedgwick County, to the commissioners, to the county manager, Tom Schultz, to Mike Papoun and Lindsay for all the support over the last two and a half years. That, like Lindsay said, that was a little painful to relive some of those memories back during the pandemic, but we are in a much better place today, and we owe a lot to, to Sedgwick County and to the partnership that we've had. So thank you for all of that. Upcoming events, we always love to talk about. We have a televised event coming up on Monday, June 12th. Monday Night Raw is back. It's been about a year since we had them, so we're excited for that. Chris Stapleton is going to be basically a sold-out show by the time we get there, one of our hottest-selling tickets. And then you'll see a couple more of the shows. We have a good mix of shows in the summer. One thing we've noticed coming out of the pandemic is that it seems like it takes a little longer for tours to get out on the road. Maybe they start, and we saw concerts kind of starting in March and April this year as opposed to, it used to be January, February. But the good news is, is we're also seeing more consistent activity throughout the year, throughout the summer. So we used to have less events in the summer. Now we have two to three shows, concert-type events every month this coming, this, the summer upon us. So we're pretty excited about that, and that's what you see reflected in this list. Hot Wheels Monster Truck Live Glow Party, so it was the first time we've ever had this event, glow-in-the-dark monster trucks. Who wouldn't like that? And that'll be coming up in July. And then Zach Bryan is an artist that has kind of flown under the radar a little bit, but is going to be our biggest selling show of the year and since, probably since George Strait, with Zach Bryan in August, so that'll be a big show. We have the ICT Ice Classic coming back with the Coyotes and the Blues, the preseason game. That was a great event last year, first time we hosted NHL preseason game at the, at the facility, a goal of ours for a long time. We were able to get that done last year, and it was cool to see. I think if you went to that game, you would have saw a jersey from every NHL team represented there with the fans. So it was just, people came out just to support hockey in general. And we're appreciative to the promoters locally that brought that and to the Thunder for their assistance with that event. We also have a couple other events coming up later in the fall that you see there. And then Lindsay alluded to future events. We have the Midwestern Synchronized Skating Sectional Championships with Visit Wichita coming up in January of '24. That's also with the local figure skating community we're partnering on. That event has been here about, this will be the third time, I believe. And it's always a successful event, brings a lot to skaters in from all across the western half of the country and families. And it's well-attended by the families and friends of the skaters. And then in March of '25, Lindsay mentioned, the men's tournament will return. Unfortunately, we missed out in '21 due to the pandemic, but we're hoping, as was mentioned, the next bid cycle comes up this coming year. The, it, it comes out in July, the bid specs, and then responses are due in February of '24, and then fall of '24, which seems like forever, but it's not, right? That's when the sites will be announced, and the next years are 2026 through 2030. So partnering with Wichita State, Visit Wichita, the Sedgwick County and the city to submit those bids, and looking forward to hopefully securing a couple more tournaments coming to town. But we're excited, obviously, for the men's to return in '25. So that's a little bit about events. Our staff, you know, again, we've come a long ways since the pandemic and rebuilt, and we're, we're back up to about 36 full-time staff at the arena. And, and we are full right now. We don't have any open positions, so happy to say that, first time in, in a long time that we've been able to say that. So happy with our team. Not only do they do a great job of putting on the events, right now, we're doing a lot of, we have a little break until June 12th, so we're doing a lot of cleaning and organizing and working on capital improvement projects in the summer. It's a great time to do that. And then we're also doing community involvement. So we have been involved in Habitat for Humanity, Kansas Food Bank and Salvation Army at the end of last year. And then this year, we were involved in the Humane Society. And then coming up, we have Ronald McDonald House Golf Tournament that we're participating in as volunteers, not golfers. We're going to help put on the tournament. And then also Kansas Special Olympics, we've done just about every year, is coming up first week of June, so we're excited about that. We still offer ticket donations to nonprofit organizations that reach out to us, making that request. We're great, it's a great solution for silent auction items, so we like to be involved in that for nonprofits. And then also, we allow one nonprofit per month to be on our, the marquee that Lindsay referenced earlier before. So that's a little bit of how we are involved in community involvement locally. So, you know, one thing we talked about, the moments of COVID. Since then, we rolled out a new branding, and it's Hang On Every Moment. And we really appreciate, I mean, we all remember back to that night, those of us that were there for Blake Shelton, Wednesday, March 11th of 2020, and we kind of knew something's going to change here. We didn't obviously realize how drastic it was going to be. But coming out of it, Hang On Every Moment, we think it's a great brand, a great theme. Just enjoy the moments and make the most of them. And it also kind of plays into men's basketball coming back too, as you hang on the rim. So, right, so we're excited for that and excited for the times ahead. And I do want to call out County Councilor Mike Papoun, and just, I know your days with the county are dwindling. So we're very appreciative of you. As, as was mentioned, you've been with us from the very beginning, and we just appreciate all the support over the years and wish you the best of luck in the, in the next, in the years ahead. So thank you for your help.
Thanks, AJ. Great report, exciting future. Any other comments? Okay. Is any other comments or questions for AJ? I don't see any, so Lindsay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have a quick question for Lindsay, that's okay. I'll say, well, as, as AJ walks away, thank you for the report. You did a great job, thank you. But for Lindsay, you also did a great job, but I am curious. You, you referenced the $260,000 support from the county for the, is it, you call that the convenience fee? What'd you call that?
So there's a $1.50 portion of the facility fee on eligible tickets that ASM Global remits to the county, and then our amendment number four says that the county will match those funds.
That's, that's primarily the, the annual support we would provide then this year, other than approval of their CIP or whatever.
That would be the only general fund support that goes toward the arena.
So, and to me, this is not a fair question. You're welcome to reject my question, but can, can we speculate where we're going to end up by the end of this year? I mean, I don't know if we have enough data to kind of figure out where we're going to end up, because I know we have a budget to approve in August, and I don't, I feel badly not knowing the data on our, on reserve fund at the end of the year, if we don't know that going into the budget cycle.
So AJ and I actually were just talking about this very issue before the meeting or before this item. So I have updated our forecast model. I want to run it by AJ and make sure that the assumptions that I've made are accurate. Once that is confirmed, I'm more than happy to share with you our current year projection, as well as what we see through the life of the term of the agreement with ASM Global. So if you can give me a couple of days to get that, I will be happy to share it back with you.
I was putting you on the spot with that, and I appreciate you, you know, intending to, to answer the question in your own timeline. That's, that's really great, thank you. I think we just need the data as we go into the budget deliberations. I don't have any other comments, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to receive and file.
Okay, I'll second that. And Lindsay, I had a quick question myself. So the reserve, which has been a discussion in the past, is, is it safe to say that it's sitting at about 5.2 million right now?
We have actually made some, some substantial payments this year, so it's probably safer to say it's closer to about 3.5 right now because of those. to say it's closer to about 3.5 right now because of those payments. However, assuming A.J. signs off on the assumptions that we have made, I don't see that fund going insolvent at any point in time between now and the end of the management term. But that's all I want to commit to right now until I give him the opportunity to look at those numbers.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks again, A.J., to you and your staff. And Lindsay, thanks to you too, and your staff. Next item, please.
Item G, public hearing for and in adoption of the 2023 Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Plan five-year update.
Good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Susan Erlin-Wine, Director of Environmental Resources. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment requires every county to create a solid waste management plan. This is done in cooperation between my department and the Solid Waste Committee. I'd like to recognize Nikki Sois, the Chairperson of our Solid Waste Committee, who's done a great job over the decades with this group. So we create the plan, and the Commissioners approve it. The state also requires us every year to review the plan and update the data in it, and every five years do a more in-depth study. So this is the five-year review period right now. So I'd like to review the information for you. KDHE requires that we list any changes since our last five-year update and the last annual update, and look at the demographics, the list of solid waste committee members, the solid waste system that's in place, and the capacity for future growth for that, and our data, and looking at the future. For the demographics, we have still 20 incorporated cities in the county. Two of those are cities of the first class, Wichita and Derby. We have 26 unincorporated townships, and we looked at the census data to determine approximately what the population would be in the future. We also have a system in place for collection of solid waste. There are 12 businesses that are licensed to collect non-hazardous waste. This is your trash-by-the-curb side of those. There are 10 of those that actually do the curbside collection, two are more special cleanups for properties. Of the 20 cities in Sedgwick County, 15 have some sort of a franchise or contract for trash collection and recycling. Wichita has a unique contract. They have one with all haulers, but they must provide volume-based trash rates. That means that carts of different sizes should be offered to the customers, so they pay less for a smaller cart. And Wichita requires the haulers to provide curbside recycling directly or through a subcontract. There you see the 15 cities. Some of those have a bulky waste collection as part of their contract. All of them have curbside recycling and volume-based rates as part of their contracts. The five cities that do not have contracts are listed here. Of those five, Hayesville is currently in the process of request for proposal through the contractors to have a contract for solid waste collection and curbside recycling for their community. There's another city that I'll be talking to in the near future on that list to see about doing the same thing, excuse me. So in the future, there may be only three cities that do not have a contract for waste collection. The Solid Waste Committee has made some recommendations for this plan, and so before you is some wording that's in red, that's currently in the plan, and the next slide will show what the committee is recommending to replace this. Currently, for contracts, it reads, "County Leader, Support and Encourage Free Market Efforts. Sedgwick County Expect Cities in the County to Adopt a Free Market Approach to Solid Waste Disposal in lieu of Having a Contract or Franchise for Solid Waste Services." This encourages the entrepreneurial spirit and empower citizens to make their own decisions in regards to solid waste disposal. The committee recommends, "County Leader, Support and Encourage Free Market Efforts for Trash Collections." Sedgwick County also recognizes the advantage of waste harvester contracts that will reduce road wear and tear, reduce air emissions, reduce disposal costs, and increase services for such as curbside recycling, volume-based trash rates, and bulky waste collections. The committee has always been supportive of contracts for those reasons that were just listed. Mr. Chairman, I understand that you would like to wait till the end of my presentation for the board to vote on each one of these items. Is that correct?
I think that's the will of the commission unless somebody feels differently at this time.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Continue then. For its trash disposal, we have a transfer station up at 37th Street North and West Street, and the trash that's collected from people's curbsides goes to that transfer station, which is then taken to Plum Thicket Landfill in Harper County. We had a 4.2% decrease in the amount of trash produced by the community compared to 2021. So it's 386,925 total tons. One of the things we looked at is the life expectancy of the Plum Thicket landfill, and at the current volumes, they have at least 44 more years of life left in that landfill. What we'd like to achieve is to keep seeing that number decrease as it has been, which will extend the life of the landfill further into the future. The committee reviewed the municipal solid waste disposal efforts, and they reconfirmed the transfer stations as the disposal option for solid waste. They also reconfirmed the commitment that, basically, if there is to be a local landfill in the future, it should be county-owned, and we should continue to explore new waste technologies, which we have looked at as generation opportunities through time. Solid Waste Management Committee also strongly encourages the opening of a transfer station on the south side of Sedgwick County. There was an open transfer station owned by Waste Disposal, Inc. at 55th Street South in Hoover. The couple that owned that retired, fixed it up, and it was sold to Waste Connections, who owns the north transfer station. They have yet to open that station. And the public, I hear from the townships, the citizens, all the time about illegal dumping in the south part of the county, and how the fact that this is not a disposal option close on the south side may help contribute to that. So that's one of the concerns we continue to hear, and that's why the committee is making this recommendation. Looking at the 15-year trend of the amount of solid waste disposed of in Sedgwick County, you can see it has decreased quite a bit since 2007. So we've been making a lot of progress on reducing the amount of trash produced in our community. And part of that is through recycling. We, our plan encourages citizens to recycle and reduce waste. In '22, over 67,000 tons of waste was recycled. That's a 34.7 increase from '21, which is really great. And you can see the trend over time from 2007. We've been increasing the amount of recycling happening in our community, and again, we will strive to keep doing that. The Solid Waste Committee recommends that the county works with recycling facilities. By the way, the curbside recyclables that are collected go to a material recovery facility in Hutchinson. They've upgraded to state-of-the-art robotics to sort through the material there, so most of the material's being recycled, but there are still contaminants where people put the raw material in the recycling bin, and that can contaminate that load. So they would like us to work with these facilities, determine what the problems are, and educate the public on how to keep contaminants out of the recycling waste stream. On curbside recycling, additionally, there's drop-off recycling where people can take material to an international paper, which are cardboard and paper products, and they have bins outside the facility. That's the photo on the upper right, and where people can come and drop off the materials. And Pro Kansas Recycling is a nonprofit, and they receive materials as well. I always encourage people to call Pro Kansas Recycling before going there to make sure the type of material they're receiving. Recyclables are commodities, and the commodities market changes, so they may change the type of material they receive due to the market conditions. There are composting facilities in the county. There are two. There's one, Evergreen, located up at 53rd Street North, just west of Broadway, and at the Brooks Construction and Demolition Landfill, they have a compost facility there as well. And when yard waste material comes in, they pull that out and take it to the compost facility, where people can bring yard waste straight to it. There are cities that offer the compost areas for their citizens. So if you're a citizen of some of the cities, like Hayesville and Derby and others, you can take the material to that place, and it will be recycled into mulch that citizens can later collect. Specific waste or special waste refer to materials that have, you know, unique quality that causes them to be collected separate from your regular trash. Household hazardous waste refers to the cleaners you have under your sink, the oils and gasoline, pesticides, herbicides that you might have in your garage. It's chemicals that we try to keep from people from pouring down the drain or illegally pouring down storm drains. In fact, the city of Wichita and County Stormwater Departments use the numbers we have from our facility annually in their reports to the state to show that there is an alternative to illegally dumping of materials that help the community. In '22, we had over 13,800 participants bring in over a million and a quarter pounds of materials to our facility. We also work with, we call, small quantity generator businesses. They produce a small amount of hazardous waste that's below the federal and state level. We charge them our cost when they bring materials to us, and they have checked with contractors in the area and determined that because of the quantity we receive at our facility, our cost is cheaper than anything they could get if they tried to directly contract with a company. So we worked with 209 conditionally exempt small quantity generators in '22, receiving almost 40,000 pounds of materials from those companies. We also have a swap-and-shop area in the household hazardous waste facility, which is located at 801 Stillwell. At that facility, we put out products that you can still read the label and know what's in the product, and that the product is in good condition. There's no charge for citizens of Sedgwick County to come in and collect the materials. We do limit it to 10 items per month, and that happened over time because of some people coming in and practically wiping the whole area out of products. We had over 327,000 pounds of materials reclaimed from the citizens last year, and that was almost 10,000 customers. But we saved almost $73,000 in disposal costs that we would have paid our contractor had we had to pay them to take that material. We also had remote events, five remote collection events to help better serve the community, so they don't have to come to our facility, but we go out into their area. Over 1,300 vehicles brought in, almost 200,000 pounds of household hazardous waste at those events last year. And I've been currently lining up the events for this year for everybody. But last year, you could see we had it at Textron at the Beach Campus, Spirit Aerosystems, Park City Library, Hayesville City Hall, and Sedgwick County Zoo, and all of those were very well-attended. Looking at the trend of material volume-wise coming into the household hazardous waste facility since we opened it in 2002, you can see pretty constant rise. If you average out, that blue line is from the citizens take, bringing material in, and the green line are the citizens, volume-wise, taking material out through the swap-and-shop. You see kind of a high peak there near the right side, that's COVID. And people were really cleaning out during COVID. They were at home, finding a good way to spend their time, and a lot of them brought material to us. Swap-and-shop had lower numbers because we were closed for a period of time, and then limited the number of customers at a time who could come into the facility. So here, you can see the number of customers dropped off in 2020, but yet, we had the highest volume of, ever, of like 1,800,000 pounds. And this is the sort of loads we got at COVID, with people cleaning out, and that takes a while to unload a trailer like that or a pickup loaded like that. But it was good because after that, I think a lot of people cleaned out and didn't have anything left for a while. So we also have construction and demolition landfills in the county. They take materials that are non-toxic, such as shingles, drywall, two-by-fours, bricks, carpeting, and they can bury that material out of construction and demolition landfill. There are two of those, one up at Brooks Landfill, just north of K96 on West Street, and then just south of there, which is called CDR North. They had a 14% increase from 2021, and I believe that's simply because there was a decrease in the previous years due to COVID. And here, you can see the 15-year trend. A lot of that depends on the economy and how much building's going on in an area, and often, the building has leftover debris if it's going up, and of course, there's a lot of debris due to destruction of buildings. Bulky waste are items too large to put in your trash, whether that's a couch or a chair, the appliance. We have been promoting bulky waste coupons since 2012, where if people sign up online, they can get a coupon worth up to 1,000 pounds of materials delivered to the north transfer station. Since we started that in 2012, we've given out almost 70,000 coupons to the public for them to use. They used to be only good for a couple of months, and due to the Solid Waste Committee's recommendation, we now have it available for a six-month period, which actually runs out this June, and then we'll have a better number of how many people used it this year. We also look at storm debris, whether that's through high winds, icing conditions that bring tree limbs down, tornadoes. We help with the disposal of material. There's a storm debris plan as part of the appendix of our solid waste plan. It was updated in 2017, so that's what's in the plan, just to show the state that we have something in place. In 2015, the county commissioners approved my department purchasing a tub grinder for these events, so that we can take the brush and grind it up and have mulch available, and also an air curtain burner, which, as you see from this photo, very little smoke is emitted, so it's cleaner air, better for the environment. I'm going to back up a second, compared to what you see in the upper-right photo here, where if you're burning debris out in an open burn, you're creating a lot of smoke in an area. We also have 22 sites around the county. Those are the red dots you see on the map for Christmas tree recycling. We have a period starting a week before Christmas to mid-January, where people can drop off their Christmas trees. They're then ground into mulch material that's available for the public to pick up. I'll tell you, through this time, we get calls constantly, "Is it mulch yet? Can I go out to these sites and collect it?" People really like this. Since we started this, over 106,000 trees have been collected at these sites. And we provide no dumping signs for the townships to put up along the roads, just y- Just yesterday, I was driving along and saw a couch and four reclining chairs in a ditch on a township road. So then I reported it to the township. But you have this problem of people going out and dumping. Obviously, they have the means for transportation, they're just not paying for the proper disposal. We work with all of the townships and we say, "If you provide the labor for illegal dumping and collect the material," we give them a form that then my department gets the bill for the disposal of that material. So this helps clean up the environment and get some material out from being a road hazard along the township roads. Since we started this in 2002, over 2 million pounds have been collected in illegal dumping and taken to the transfer station. 126,000 of those were lost this year. We also work with Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department where they have properties that need cleaning up. The people may be willing, but they don't have the funds to remove the materials and pay for the proper disposal. So to keep the people from getting a citation, we have provided dumpsters through MABCD and the aging department, both usually for hoarding cases, to help these properties be cleaned up. Since we started this with, just since 2017, we have provided 697 dumpsters for properties and 695 vouchers. The vouchers is for smaller cleanup where the people can self-haul the material. They have pickups or trailers that they can take it themselves. But again, my department receives the bill. At the bottom, you see a before photo on the left and an after photo on the right. We also have tire events. Tires out in the community collect water, breeding grounds for mosquitoes, they are road hazards. Since we began this program, we've received over a million pounds of tires from over 19,000 vehicles. And the state really loves this program because it gets the tires out of the environment. Also, I've received a call recently from another county in the state who heard about our program and has talked to me about how we do it because they have a big tire situation. We also provide electronic events. Electronic waste has very expensive elements in it such as gold and platinum and silver, but they also have compounds in the electronics that can cause health problems. So it's best to recycle them properly. You can see from the chart how we have changed over time. The first event was a one-day event that collected over a million pounds. That's why I'll never do another one-day event. And since then, we've been doing six-day events and collecting basically half a million pounds. Last time we did it in '22, it was a quarter of a million. So overall, two and a half million pounds of electronics. The company we use is a zero-waste company that receives this material, is reused or recycled, and nothing is shipped overseas. We also had to let the state know that medical waste is taken care of, whether this is from dental offices, doctors, veterinarians. Stericycle provides that service in our community. We also have drug drop-off locations and participate in the DEA programs. Usually, there's a DEA drop-off at the Cedric County Zoo and the Household Hazardous Waste Facility. There are 15 locations across Cedric County with these MedSafe and some of those are provided by my department at police stations. We do public education for the community, try to get brochures out when possible, have websites, and a recycling guide that we update on the Cedric County Environmental Resources website where a person can click on the item and just find out who will take the material. It gives the information on contacting them. The committee recommends, again, increasing education on recycling to reduce the amount of contamination and that we educate the public on disposal and recycling options offered by their waste hauler. Earlier, when I talked about the contracts, especially that Wichita has with all of the haulers, many people in Wichita may not realize that the hauler must provide volume-based containers in curbside recycling if requested. So they filled the messages in getting out there and asked the county to provide more information on that. We have to give permits through these committee and the commissioners for any new solid waste permits. KDHE requires they're approved by us first, that they're in compliance with our plan. So you can see a list over time of permits that we've had in the last five years for Stericycle, getting a transfer station for the medical waste, Evergreen Recycling wanting to accept construction and demolition material, and Waste Connections approval of transferring tires from their facility. Also, any grants for the state must come through the Solid Waste Committee for their approval as to conformance with our plan. And there have been several of those through the past five years on businesses trying to get more money to help recycle materials, plus Cedric County Park receiving a tire grant to resurface a playground at the park. Solid waste fee is what pays for all of these services that the county provides. A year ago, the commissioners approved the fee of the non-residential property range from 533 to 1067 and the base rate for residential of 838. After we finish with my agenda item, the next item, we'll be looking at the fee for the next year. So the projects we have, we work that are paid for by that fee, storms, the tire event, e-waste event, pharmaceuticals, special cleanups, bulky waste coupons, special waste such as household hazardous waste. All of those items are part of that fee. And some people may use one item, like a bulky waste coupon, and never come to our household hazardous waste facility, where they may bring electronics or tires and never do one of the others. So we try to do, and what the committee has recommended, is help the citizens of the community, reduce the amount of waste, increase recycling, and help on special waste disposal to help clean up the environment and make the community better. So that's the end of my presentation. The state does require a public hearing on the five-year plan. And then after its approval later, I must also present this to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission before I take it to the state. Anything that updates from this, like we do not have the numbers yet from the last tire event, I will put in the plan before taking it to the state and I have that in the plan, that we're waiting on certain numbers still. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you want to do that before or after the public hearing.
Okay, Susan, just a reminder, so this is a five-year plan that is required?
Yes, it is.
That's why it's extensive and covered many, many items.
That's right. The state requires the annual, but the five-year is more in depth and we have to have it to the state by July 1st.
Okay. And then I, and then we might have some comments or questions right now to you and then we'll have the public hearing. But before we get to the questions, I just want to thank Nikki, who I met in the Solid Waste Committee. That's, that's a lot of effort that the Solid Waste Committee puts into this. And it's serious stuff, somewhat stinky stuff, but really good. I can't extend my appreciation for that, all the work that you all do and the committee does in supporting Susan in this, in this endeavor. So with that, see if there's any questions or comments right now from the commission. Looks like Commissioner Howell has one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the briefing today.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, when, when someone gets a bulky waste coupon, if they haul a mattress or a piece of furniture, that they, again, the transfer stations and even, even the CND, they'll charge a fee for those items specifically because of what they are. So is that, is our permit, is our coupon cover the cost of those items?
They cover the cost of furniture, but not the mattress because that's most of the cost of one coupon is $30. One of the things we can look at is just providing mattress coupons only and how many that they could take for that. The minimum charge right now, I believe, is $42 for the 1,000 pounds. So if you had one mattress in there, that's above, that's, the way they charge, that's above and beyond the 30 unless you only have a mattress, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense. And again, most of the places you can take those mattresses, the per item fees are up to 40, they're quite a bit higher than that.
That's right. Yeah, if you bought a mattress from a store and they come to your house and take your old mattress, it's higher than that because they have the transportation involved as well.
So I guess my next question would be, this presentation today, and I'm looking, I'm looking at the, the larger document that's in our, our agenda book today, but it looks to me like the majority of what's been presented today is, is a history of what's we, what we've done going backwards. It talks about all the events we've had, how many customers came and the things we provide and, and all of that. There is an estimation of the life of the, of the different transfer state, well, not transfer stations, but the, the, the event up, I'm sorry, the location we take up in Harper, there's, there's life for that. You said that already. But I see in the backup material, there's a life for CDR and Brooks landfill.
Yeah, CDR, the, is a shorter life. Brooks CND landfill has, they said, between 43 and 45 years left there.
Do we, do we analyze the type of trash or type of, types of materials that they're taking in? I mean, if it's sheet rock and, and lumber and things like that, there may not be a lot of things we can do with that. But how much of what they take in is mattresses and, and tree limbs?
Brooks CND landfill has the cheapest disposal cost for mattresses at $10 each and they take in quite a bit of mattresses. Unfortunately, they're stored outdoors, but they take those up to the Hutchinson Recreation L, I mean, not for me, I'm sorry. They wish correctional facility. And at that facility, the inmates actually deconstruct the mattresses for recycling. So they pull apart the materials and I know some of the mattress shops also do that and take it to that facility.
Well, I'll just share, and I'll, I'll try not to talk too long here, but one of my biggest concerns is the, the brief events that we have and they're sometimes years apart. Now, like the tire event, for example, first one of those was, was quite a long time ago. Then we had one, I think it's, we had one four years later. So 2000 was the first and we had two, four years later, 2004. Then we waited seven years, we did it in 2011, and then we did it, waited four more years, did it in 2015. Then each of the two years after that, we've done it every other year. If I was in a community, I'm going to assume that we're going to do this next year. And what it, what that does, it provides, if you will, a, a behavior change where someone's going to hold on to those tires because they think they're going to save a few dollars. I think, again, I think businesses are abusing this based on the number of tires dropped off per, per vehicle. It looks to me like this is a lot of abuse potentially, but, but also there's an expectation. So if we're trying to get tires out of the community, being stored in the community because it causes, causes trouble, health and safety issues, we're almost encouraging them to store these tires. It seems like it's a backwards solution. We're providing a, a way for someone to dispose of these on someone else's solid waste fees that they're paying and the number of people who actually utilize the free service are very few. And so I'm concerned about these short little events that a few people are taking, you know, taking advantage of and the vast majority of people paying the cost of that are not getting the benefit. So I would like to see the Solid Waste Committee, you know, reconsider a plan that would create new services that are year-round and try to eliminate abuse by some, by, by a few people in the community on the, on the backs of other fee, fee payers. And so to me, every one of these programs has, and I'm not doing the math, talking about the math in every case, virtually every one of these programs, you can see the same type of situation where a very few people take it, you know, take opportunity and they haul enormous quantities of stuff. And to the extent it keeps it out of the community, that, that, that part of it's good, but it also, I, I think it creates an issue of abuse and probably the, the wrong behavior to store this stuff for periods of time and not taking care of it immediately. Again, what I like about the HHW site on Stillwell is if I have extra paint, I don't have to wait for years to bring that in. I can get rid of it right now because it's open every week. And so to me, that's, that's, that's a better situation and I would rather see the Solid Waste Committee focus on that type of service. And then finally, I'll just say this, I think our number one goal is, is to reduce the bulk, the, the, the amount of stuff going into the landfills because to find a replacement to those is incredibly politically almost impossible. It's very, very, very hard. And so to reduce the, the bulk of, of items going into there is our number one goal. It's not really stated in the plan.
And I think that is the committee's plan as well. And I think the graphs show that we've been going that direction and I hope to continue that.
Right. And, and again, so one of my, one of my concerns is, again, I, I live in Derby, so they take tree limbs. There's a lot of things they won't take there, but the county doesn't really provide me another option. So if I have stuff that I can't take to the tree limb site at Derby, and, and most of the cities in Cedric County don't have an option for that, that all ends up in a landfill somewhere. And again, that just fills up the, the space and that's the type of stuff we ought to be recycling. It's so easy to recycle. The costs are fairly low and it's a huge amount of material that I think would be fairly easy to process. That's my opinion. But again, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Solid Waste Committee, Nikki, you can, again, each commissioner might have a, have a suggestion. It's up to the committee to review everything, it's, and bring it back to the, to the body as a whole. So, but thank you. And any other questions or comments? I don't see any.
Okay. Do you want to open the public hearing and then do the voting on the recommendations?
So we have had some questions and answers and so we're going to open the public hearing for this item. Does anybody from the public want to address the commission on the adoption of the County Waste Management Plan, the five-year plan? If so, please come forward. I don't see anybody and so going once, twice. So we will close the public hearing and bring it back in front of us. If there's any other questions or comments, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And thank you, Susan. I appreciate everything that you do to help our environment. Thank your staff also.
Will do.
And especially thanks for the committee, for the work that they do to prepare this five-year plan. I just have one small issue on the plan and that's what I want to address at this point. And I see that you made some changes to, to one portion of it and that's where I still have some concerns about the, the contracts. The, the changes you made are positive, it's just I want to go one step further, okay? I believe each of the, we have 20 different cities here and I believe each one of them should have an opportunity because they have Home Rule to decide how to run their organization. And I, I don't think it's our position to tell them that they have to do contracts or what they have to do. So I, I did kind of rewrite this just a little bit. I kept a lot of your words in because a lot of your words are very good, but I, I want to make sure that we don't tell the cities how to run their city and how to best serve their, their citizens. So I've provided a copy, actually, the county attorney provided it to the commissioners, I believe, yesterday. I've provided them each a copy of what I've redrafted, but let me go through and, and I'll read what this has to say and then I, I'd like to make a motion to change that. I rewrote it to say that county leaders support local communities' efforts to reduce the cost and increase services for solid waste collection. Cedric County recognizes that cities should make their own decisions in regards to waste disposal. Cedric County does not, or I'm sorry, Cedric County does recognize the advantage of waste hauler contracts that will reduce wear and tear, reduce air emissions, reduce disposal costs, and increase services such as curbside recycling, volume-based trash rates, and bulk waste collection. So it kept. So it kept a lot of your words in there. I just wanted to make sure that we turned it over to the cities rather than us tell the cities what that they should do. So if the, if the chairman has no objection, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve the solid waste plan with one modification, with the change in the words that I, I just read to everyone.
Okay. Susan, have you seen a copy of this?
Yes, I have. It sounded good to me.
I was going to say, you have an opinion on it, it sounds okay? And Nikki and the committee have seen this as well, and you're comfortable with it as well? Okay? Thank you for, thank you for your work, Commissioner, on this. Any questions or comments about, about that? I, I'll make a second. So the motion is to approve the five-year plan with the substitute language as read and provided, and I will second that motion. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't necessarily have a problem with the suggested language, but the one thing that looks like, it looks like, the one phrase that's being taken out of this sentence, it refers to the, the top, the topics of free market efforts for trash collections. And I guess I'm curious as to why, why the change? I don't understand what's motivating this suggestion today.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Howe. If, if you look through on, say, about page three of the presentation that Susan just provided, we have a number of cities that have already decided what they want to do. We've got a couple that are still deciding right now what they want to do. But the issue that I have is that if we direct that they only use free market, that they don't go out and contract because contracting can fulfill the requirements that are listed later in, in this motion that I made and which was in the, the plan from the Solid Waste Commission, because what we want to do is reduce world rare. In my homeowner's association alone, I have three trash trucks that go down the street every single week, and they're tearing up our streets. We can reduce emissions from all those trash trucks that are going up and down, and with the ability to work with the, the different haulers, you can actually reduce the cost in order to be able to get the, provide that service to the, to the citizens and encourage recycling. So I, I think that, that, that's honestly the big reason why I took that out. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second, unless you have something else?
No, I, I guess my, our response is, so Commissioner Dennis is trying to encourage more contracting and cities to, in fact, find ways to, to coordinate this at the city level rather than having cities that don't get into this at all. It sounds like that's what the, that's the intent of this change.
I'm trying to give control to the cities instead of the county telling the cities what to do.
All right. I'm rereading it. Interpreting it, okay. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks again, Susan, for your presentation. Next item, please.
Item H, adoption of a resolution establishing solid waste management fees for 2024.
Good morning again. Carly, you're not Carly Sanchez.
I am not Carly Sanchez. I am Lindsey Pogerso, your chief financial officer.
I do see Carly in the audience.
And I am here in the blue of Carly, even though she did all the work, because there were some questions on the history, and we talked about this the other day, so I wanted to be available for that. So with that, I've introduced myself for the record, and I am here to talk about solid waste fees, and I will express my gratitude to Carly for doing all of the legwork on this. So as Susan explained to you, there is a solid waste plan. That plan is funded majority by solid waste fees. That fee has been in place since two thousand. At that time, there were a number of steps that were determined to identify who benefits from the fee-supported service, to allocate a pro-rata share of that service cost based on the benefit, divide the allocated cost by the number of those benefiting units to determine a base annual fee, then for non-residential properties, to classify those according to waste generation characteristics, and then assign a non-residential fee greater or less than the base rate based on that waste generation class. So back when that was done, the benefit allocation was looked at based on whether a single-family, a multifamily residential property, or an improved non-residential property, who benefited based on the program planning and design, who benefited from the household hazardous waste planning, and who benefited most from public education. And so by vast majority, it was determined at that time that single-family residential benefits the most, anywhere from eighty to ninety percent. And so that was the basis for determining a residential unit based here and then also putting together the commercial and industrial parcels. And so the commission does need to authorize this, just like the solid waste plan, by July first, but I know that you all have been contacted by our county appraiser and county clerk's offices. There's a lot of work that they have to do in order to prepare for the budget season and everything that falls out because this is put on a property tax bill. And so we're bringing to this, to you in May in order to actually approve this for calendar year 2024. So as we discussed, the fee does vary according to classification. The residential property owners pay a fixed amount per dwelling unit. Commercial and industrial property owners pay an amount based on their waste generation characteristics for their particular business or parcels of property. That is determined based on a list of codes that the appraiser's office maintains. There's actually some history there in terms of the determination to use that as the basis, and it has evolved over time. The resolution for 2024, again, proposes a flat fee with 2023, which, as you heard from Susan, is flat with 2022. So the residential fee would be eight dollars and thirty-eight cents annually. Tier one, and we do have some examples for what's included in these tiers, again, based on the level of waste. Tier one would be a golf course, a cemetery, postal services, libraries, fitness clubs. That tier is five dollars and thirty-three cents annually. Tier two would be something like an automatic car wash, an auto service center, a bowling alley, animal shelter. That tier is seven dollars and eleven cents per year. Tier three would be grocery stores, supermarkets, bakeries, schools, universities, auto dealerships, folks who generate quite a bit of waste. And so that's eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. And then tier four would be a hotel, a motel, a fast food restaurant, a hospital, or manufacturing, and that is ten dollars and sixty-seven cents annually. And then, of course, there's tier five, which would be like a mall. And so for those, it doesn't look at the size or the waste of that particular facility, but rather the tenants within there. And so that is seven dollars and eleven cents per business unit. We have made the decision historically to collect these fees via the county property tax bill in order to be efficient and save money. It doesn't have to be that way, but that's how we have done it, even though it is not a property tax. So we do have the subject matter experts here, but I do have some information, historical information available if we need to talk about any of that. So with that, commissioners, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would recommend that you approve the resolution establishing the solid waste fees for 2024.
Okay. Any questions for Lindsey on the solid waste fees? Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve as presented. Commissioner Dennis?
I think your mic's not on, sir.
Beg your pardon, thank you. I don't have a problem with the motion. I don't know if we could add into that or if I make a separate motion, but this, this plan was adopted, honestly, in, in June of nineteen ninety-nine.
Yes.
Okay. Since that time, I pulled up the backup material. It takes nine pages to detail where all of the different fees come from. And if you go through those nine pages in any detail, what you're going to find is that, for example, tier three, which includes big box stores, lumberyard, discount stores and so forth, only pay fifty-one cents more than the, someone that owns a house. So maybe that's the right number. I don't know right now. And I don't know if having nine pages of information for our staff to have to go through to decide whose property to put this tax on. So all I'm asking is that we ask the staff to form a committee prior to next year, when they bring this back to us, to go through and analyze this and see if what we did back in nineteen ninety-nine is still applicable in twenty twenty-three going into twenty twenty-four. So I don't know if you want, need a separate motion or if we'd like to add to that existing motion to have asked the staff to review that prior to bringing it back.
I, I think we can, if it's okay, maybe I could make the recommendation that you would approve the resolution subject to that review coming back next year.
Okay. So since it wasn't seconded, I'll amend my, my original motion to approve as presented with the addition to recommend a thorough review as of the tiers. Is that the right, is that the right word?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
So motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm curious, what are the special projects planned for this next year?
Electronic waste.
Oh, here, come up to the podium.
For 2024, we're looking at electronic waste collection event. And along with Christmas trees, bulky waste coupons, working with the townships, the med safe drop-off boxes, household hazardous waste facility and the five remotes, all of those are part of it, storm, storm debris cleanup if necessary.
Okay. In this backup material, I don't see a, maybe I missed it. I don't see a history of the solid waste fee per year. Do we have that anywhere in here? Did I miss it?
I don't know that we have that as an attachment. We do have that information, and if it's helpful, we can provide it to the clerk to include it in the record.
And one mil, one mil of property tax today generates, what, about five point seven million dollars?
Yes, sir.
So this is about a point three five percent mil, three point three five mil levy equivalent, probably. I'd like to calculate that out, two million?
Yes.
Two million divided by five point seven is about thirty-five hundreds of a mil.
Yes, maybe not quite that high, but pretty close.
One thing is, one thing is different about this also, this is a per parcel fee, rather, so it's not, you know, if someone has a million dollar home versus a mobile home, it's going to be the same rate.
Right.
So this doesn't take into consideration their ability to pay necessarily, it's just a flat rate.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Dennis, and I think this ought to be reviewed. I don't know that I'm happy with the way this is apportioned to the different parcels. I think that's a, I think that's an important detail that he's pointed out. And I also would like to recognize this, this fee has essentially doubled the time that I've been here. And, and again, not to beat an ant horse, but I, I continue to bring up this idea where I don't know that these programs are beneficial to all of the citizens who are paying, although it's maybe available to them, most of the people don't know about these, these special events, and very few people actually take advantage of the opportunity, and those that do seem, seem to be abusing some of these things. And so I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the, the rate being so high. And again, just as a point of reference, I believe, I believe our aging mil levy equivalent is actually lower than this, so I have, I have some concerns. And with that, I'll probably vote no. Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
No.
Commiss, Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries four to one. Next item, please.
Item I, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. Our regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts was held on May eighteenth, and we have five items to present to you this morning. Our first one is Ivanti heat upgrade for Division of Information Technology. Recommendation is to utilize NASPO Value Point Contract CTR zero six zero zero two eight and State of Kansas Contract five three two zero one, and that's with SHI International Corp. at the rates that are listed, and this will be through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Item number two is Unified Cisco Contact Center Express Application for Division of Information Technology. And this recommendation is to utilize NASPO Value Point Contract AR three two two seven and State of Kansas Contract four seven two five eight. It's with Converge One Incorporated at the rates listed, and it's a term of thirty-six months. It begins at April first twenty, it began April first twenty twenty-three and will renew annually through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Item number three is the on-call ballot printing, Election Office. We're utilizing the Shawnee Contract C one seventy-seven, twenty twenty-one, and this is with Mainline Printing Incorporated for the contract rates. It's effect, in effect through November fifth, twenty twenty-four. And upon expiration of the initial term, services will be automatically renewed for five successive one-year periods unless it's terminated by either party, and that has to be delivered to the other party at least thirty days prior to the end of the initial term or renewal period. Item number four, Professional Consultation Services for Department of Corrections. Recommendation is to accept the proposal from Wichita State University School of Criminal Justice, and then this is in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars, and this runs from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And our final item, two each mobile crisis response team vehicles for comm care, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Davis Moore Automotive, and it's in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay, any questions about the Board of Bids? I don't see any. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. Just on the ballot printing, that does not include the, the paper, is that correct? This is just a printing service only. The paper is a separate charge?
I believe it's, it's the printing.
The reason I ask is because, of course, the state just changed it to a watermark requirement. I'm not sure what election cycle that kicks in, but that is, five-year contract, we have to know.
Commissioners Christian Lamuel, Operations Manager, Election Office. So we've used Mainline since twenty sixteen. This price includes ballot stock and printing. We can either purchase the ballot stock independently or printed ballots with that stock with the information printed on that. This does not factor in the watermark as the Secretary of State hasn't provided specifics yet. There hasn't been much dialogue from the vendors on what that may do or what that may be until we get that information from the state.
And I noticed that Shawnee County is part of this bid, and they include a pastel header. Again, I think that's, my assumption, that's a security feature. I don't know if that would satisfy the state or not, but it'd be really hard for someone to, to duplicate that outside of a, a vendor that would produce that in bulk. So I guess that the seven through eleven, seven through ten don't really apply to Sedgwick County, but.
That's correct. We currently do not use pastel headers.
Right. So, so the, the numbers on the, this bid, as far as, as far as we're concerned today, this does include the paper minus the watermark?
Correct.
That's a great number, because I thought the.
And these numbers are the same prices except for item one that we've utilized in the past contracts as well.
Sure. Well, based on what I was told in the past, this is a significantly better deal. Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion, was there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the Board of Bids. No other questions, comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye, thank you.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. Recommend approval of consent items J through T this morning.
Okay. Commissioners had a chance to review consent items J through T. If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve item, consent items J through T, as in Tom.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to recess the commission meeting and bring to order the Fire District One, Sedgwick County. Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Beatty?
Present.
Commissioner Howe?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Anybody from the public, what, do you want to address on the District One fire agenda? I don't see any. Next item, please.
New Business. Item A, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular Item A, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on May 18, 2023.
For the record, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, we have one item that is a result of the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, same date, May 18. This is Fire Records Management System and Electronic Payment Care Reporting for Fire District Number One. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from EPR Systems, and it's in the amount of $525,529 for a term of 10 years. Be happy to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay, any questions on this item? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Bids present, item that has been presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion approved. Okay. Next item, please.
Other.
Is there any other business that comes before the Fire District? I don't see any, so we will adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One, and we will return to the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissions. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Are there any legislative issues that we need to address? I don't think so, so we will move on to the next item.
Committee reports.
There's committee reports. Anybody have anything to report on their committees? I don't see any, so next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Okay, I don't see anything under other from the Commissioners. Next item, please.
Executive Session.
Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I'm going to reduce this to 15 minutes. I would move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into Executive Session for 15 minutes until 12:07 PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel relating to a management position, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from Executive Session at 12:07 PM.
Second that. Any questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, we will recess to Executive Session. I think it's here on this floor, right now. Okay, so we will go and we will return in 15 minutes.